All right, next item.
Action items, are there any agenda items on this agenda which board members or the superintendent wish to discuss and vote on separately? If there are, we will exclude these from the motion below.
President Thorpe.
Trustee McDonald.
Item number 10, the electric bus, or the bus electrification and sustainability. I'd like to have that pulled for a roll call vote. For the purpose of full transparency, my husband is a business agent with International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers, 58. And as the EV and the charging stations market continues to grow, he is heavily involved in that industry. And although he doesn't have any benefits financially or indirectly from either Highland or Rambus, Local 58 does have some dealings with both of those companies. And just as to not create any perception of impropriety, I would like to sustain from that vote.
Great. Thank you for sharing that.
Or abstain, I'm sorry. Abstain from that vote.
All right, additional items that we would want pulled, or additional items that we would have questions on? All right, then I had questions on two items, but I do not need them pulled. So they would be on items four and nine.
Okay. Recommended action, move that action items one through nine, 11 through 24 be approved as recommended in this agenda with the exception of 10.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by trustee Barry, support by trustee Petlicoff. Let me go with my two questions. One of them's really a comment, but on number four, this is about an additional request for Grad Alliance. It mentions the increase that we're looking for, but it doesn't really give a why.
I knew you were gonna ask where somebody was going to. So I can tell you, the Grad Alliance price increased between last calendar year and this calendar year. It went from $400 a student per month to $496. So that's one reason.
During the school year?
No, we knew about that going into next, into this school year. So at the close of last school year, they said July 1st, the new prices were active. We knew about that. But we're unsure how many students were gonna be coming in and out, and the length of time that it was going to take students to be, or that students were going to be in there. I remember at the beginning, not this year, but last year is when we started. So it started pretty slow with how many students we were there. So the original estimation was based off of what we knew at the time, and we underestimated how many students were there and what the cost was going to be. So, long story short, kids can be in there for 12 months, they can be in there for two months. Some of it's depending on how many credits they need and how quickly they move themselves through credit. So it's pretty difficult to be able to predict student pace in terms of how fast they're able to move through the program.
So going forward then, is this kind of a moving target that we're having to estimate each year as to how much we need to approve for the following school year?
So I think the total amount here is 820, is pretty accurate going forward, as long as their prices don't change. I have mentioned in board briefs previously that we've had some internal conversations about possibly bringing some of these students in-house, adding to, they're already under our umbrella Magnet High School, and not necessarily sending them directly to Graduation Alliance, but creating a piece, a portion of Magnet High School that might be able to serve these students as well. For some of our students that are in their fourth year, that are pretty close to graduation, we've had a lot of success. For some of our students who are in third year and don't have, or have struggled, we're not showing the same amount of success. So we're looking at possibly adding on or enhancing an offering at Magnet High School to use Edge Annuity, E2020, to provide a hybrid-ish opportunity for some of those students to see if we can better meet their needs.
So this is for an additional $100,000 for the current school year?
Yes.
But you're gonna be probably coming to us in the next couple of months for the 2023, 2024?
Correct.
So that's what I'm alluding to, is when we approve that one, it's gonna be an estimate based on what we think?
Correct.
And we could have a similar issue a year from now if there's more students or the rate goes up.
So my hope is to not be here at this point next year. I'll ask for worst-case scenario, which is kind of the numbers that we have had for about 18 months have been pretty consistent. We know what the pricing is. The money is coming out of 31A, remember the FTE. We're able to collect full FTEs on these students. So we're still cost positive for these students at about 35% of the cost. But yeah, going into next year, we'll ask for this full amount, knowing, I feel pretty confident that through Magnet and through us calibrating kind of which students are and aren't successful in Graduation Alliance, that we won't be here again. But I'm not gonna bet anything on it, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
On action item number nine, it's more of a comment that a proposal or an action item's being brought to us to begin using a new bus service for a portion of our students. If I'm correct, this is gonna be the third vendor we've used in three years if we move forward with this. Does that sound right, Dr. Milak?
I can't.
We had to turn to the national trail.
And that's a lot of change in a short amount of time. I see that the committee believes strongly in this, but all I would say is that families are creating relationships with these vendors, and I have to assume that that means new drivers, perhaps new bus aides, I don't know. But that's an awful lot of change in a short amount of time. So I hope we don't have to keep getting a different vendor from year to year for different reasons.
We hope we keep on improving our ability to serve our students with our own transportation.
Correct.
At some point.
That was, trustee Barry?
Yeah, I just wanna follow up what trustee Petlicoff said. We had this discussion a few years ago, that we need to start going that way, but I haven't seen any changes. Yes, this is the third vendor. Just because we're changing vendors does not mean that, you know, this is an improved process. You know, we improving, are we changing vendors because something happened? And it just makes it easier for us to say, we need to move on, we need to keep an eye on it, I think. I would love to see us go back to, you know, maybe fully. And I understand it's difficult, but we need to get to it. We need to have those discussions. I asked many, many months ago, and I did receive that report, that how much it would cost for us to start creating these full-time positions with the bus drivers with other responsibilities. The report we got was like, how many millions of dollars it would take? How much would it cost? I guess I'll go back to, maybe later on I'll ask a more specific question. But yeah, me personally, I would like to see this before we go back. And the other thing is, if we're getting away from our own bus drivers, and now we're spending $4.5 million with another, almost a half, $450 contingent, so that's almost $5 million. So we do have director, we do have some salaried employees. If the, if the, if the total budget is shrinking, you know, we need to have that discussion too. I guess we need, we need, we have some of the smartest people in the world in this district. We need to figure this out. I have some questions, I guess I'll follow up with under.
Trustee McDonald?
I'm just assuming that part of the reason still has to do with it's difficult to get bus drivers, and there's a bus driver shortage, and is that correct?
Yes, and we're moving towards, I mean, it is a huge cost, as you're aware, to churn over and getting the bus drivers, but I agree with you, the more we can continue to move over to our employees, the better. But the reality is, is we need a contract right now to provide the service for students to keep our busing moving forward. But you're right, correct.
And I think that we've all voiced that opinion over the years, that it's important to, and what our own employees add to the experience of our students, so.
And Rick and the team do a great job, really, in the department, so, you know.
All right. Any additional questions before we call the action item? All right, can we get a roll call?
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee Dambrojo?
Yes.
Trustee McDonald?
Yes.
Trustee Mosip?
Yes.
Trustee Petlicoff?
Yes.
Trustee Watts, yes. President Thorpe?
Yes.
Action item number 10. Recommended action, it is recommended that the board approve the bus electric, electrification and sustainable, oh my goodness, sustainability program to Highland Electric Fleets, Inc., in the estimated amount not to exceed 250, 265,000, and a 15-year estimated amount of $4,938,12 with legal counsel approval of the final contract agreement per Board Report 22 hyphen 129.
So moved.
Support.
Besides what trustee McDonald had stated, any questions, comments on this before we move forward with the motion? Trustee Dambrojo?
One question I have is basically, you know, the safety of our children, and are we gonna be able to teach our fire department and our own people how to deal with a fire that would happen on a bus? Because currently, right now, we don't have that in place, neither in our local fire department nor in the.
I was told by Chief Murray, I already asked him.
Telling you, they don't know nothing about it.
Under the RFP process, we specifically talked about training. They will provide training to, obviously, to our personnel and first responders as part of this program. And they'll do that annually, because, you know, we bring new people on constantly every year, so will the fire department, so that's something they will be providing annually.
Thank you.
So trustee Petlicoff, then just make sure when we do city relations meetings.
Yeah, I already had a conversation, conversation with Chief Murray.
Thanks.
And they are focused on training.
Okay. We look forward to working together. Any additional questions on this? Thank you, Mr. Wall. Can we get a roll call, please?
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee Dambrojo?
Yes.
Trustee McDonald?
Abstain.
Trustee Mosip?
Yes.
Trustee Petlicoff?
Yes.
Trustee Watts, yes. President Thorpe?
Yes.
Summary of agenda action items. Number one, approval of warrants. Number two, approval of an award to curriculum associates per Board Report 22 hyphen 124. Approval of an award to school specialty. Number four, approval of change orders. Number five, approval of an award to Southwest Food Service Excellence per Board Report 22 hyphen 125. Number six, approval of an award to Vision Construction and Development per Board Report 22 hyphen 126. Number seven, approval of an award to MIS Corporation. Number eight, approval of an award to Trane per Board Report 22 hyphen 127. Number nine, approval of an award to First Student per Board Report 22 hyphen 128. Number 10, approval of an award to Highland Electric Fleets, Inc. per Board Report 22 hyphen 129. Number 11 through 14, approval of non-instructional and instructional personnel items for P12. Number 15, approval of an award to Canton Computers per Board Report 22 hyphen 134. Number 16, approval of an award to AT&amp;T Mobility per Board Report 22 hyphen 135. Number 17, approval of an award to Salesforce, Inc. per Board Report 22 hyphen 136. Number 18, approval of financial statements. Number 19, approval of Wayne Reesha 2023-2024 budget per Board Report 22 hyphen 138. Number 20, approval of resolution authorizing the sale of 2023 school improvement bonds per Board Report 22 hyphen 139. Number 21, approval of sexual education advisory board recommendations. Number 22, approval of winter 2023 technology investment fund for Henry Ford College. Number 23, approval of the fiscal year 2023-2024 budget for Henry Ford College. And number 24, approval of donations.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. I'll change the motion to extend the meeting 15 minutes.
So moved. Support.
Can we have a roll call vote?
Yep. Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee Dambrojo?
Yes.
Trustee McDonald?
Yes.
Trustee Mosip?
Yes.
Trustee Petlicoff?
Yes.
Trustee Thorpe, yes. President Thorpe?
Yes.
Next discussion items, there are none.
Okay.
Next, Board of Education Business acknowledgements of correspondence.
Several different emails came in. I think most of them were coming to me. I don't recall, there were people forwarding too much in the last month, but making sure that the response goes back to everybody.
Next, Board Member Committee and Organization Reports. I'll go ahead. Policy met today. We discussed several items. The first one was the graduation requirement. Adam Martin came and spoke to us. It was some special circumstances, three in particular. The state assessment requires graduates under Board Guideline 5460 to take the MME. We had, because of COVID, one subgroup that was the students that were in the fifth-year collegiate academy students. Because they were during COVID not required to take the MME, they are now being, they're in this special circumstance that it wasn't required, but now it's one of those, what do we do with these one-time, unique situations, and how do we handle that with graduation? The other one was a group of students, two who are in the, who are in the virtual school, but because they're in the virtual school, they are out of country. So the requirement for them to come back to take a paper exam is not feasible. The other two were students that, because of medical issues, were not able to come in and take the paper copy as well. So Mr. Martin came and asked policy if, under a special circumstance, for instance, we will never have this issue with the fifth-year collegiate academy where students will not be taking the MME. And his recommendation would be, under a special circumstance, that we would be able to empower him to make that recommendation to allow these students and waive the requirement of the MME, with an understanding that next year, we have to think about, how do we remy those students as juniors if they are in virtual? How do we have them come and take the paper copy? And some of the things that we're starting to see at the state is they're thinking, or there's discussion about having the SAT now online. So what will they look like? Will that be in place by September, October? We're not quite sure. So I suggested that we reach out to MDE and find out, what are they seeing in other school districts as well? So that was one thing that we had discussed. The second thing was with the Elliott Larson Civil Rights Act passed, we looked at which policies needed updates. Most of the policies that we had highlighted already spoke to the Elliott Larson Act that established those rights, but they were already in our policies to begin with. There's only one policy that we found that needed updating, policy 5517, so Mr. Mustin will go ahead and add, update that language with. The other thing that we discussed was school names, mascots, colors, and logos, the guidelines for that. That was brought, we had discussed that a few months ago, but just cleaning up the language so that the branding of schools, if they had a particular color, that we are being cognizant to make sure that there's consistency with the colors for maybe perhaps Bryant or Hague, that they're using that specific blue versus the light blue and whatnot, so that we are having the same sort of process for all of the schools when it comes to their logos and their mascots, and just updating the verbiage for what does that look like for changing the schools. And there was always this unwritten process of creating a committee, but now we actually have verbiage that speaks to that, so that intrinsic knowledge is not held with just any one individual. The other thing that we discussed was the dress code would be updated. We had the principals from all of the various levels, from elementary, middle school, and upper school, come and give us feedback, and just clean up some of the language so that it was a little bit, it was, it gave, it was a little bit less confusing, and maybe not necessarily, you know, did the tips of your fingers touch the bottom of your shorts? So something that was just a little bit more, less measurable, but something that gave a little bit more grace. And then this, the policy committee also discussed that we will start dedicating a second policy meeting solely to address those Neola updates that we have not addressed, and we will be meeting on May 22nd from 12 to 2:00. But we will have a second policy meeting that is specifically dedicated to Neola, reviewing their policies, but starting from 2023, all the way, I believe, it could be going as far as 2018. We feel like it's more efficient of our time as opposed from 2018, because 2023 may have a policy that already circumvents the 2018. Anything else to add that I perhaps missed?
One thing that I would come back to when we were talking about the Saks Education Advisory Board, is would the board want to have the policy committee start looking at us putting our own policy and about the frequency, how often we want them to get back together?
Well, is that something that the board needs to do, or is it under the guidelines?
Well, the state's not telling us any.
Anything.
Anything, so.
The superintendent.
It would be up to the district, so it's a question.
We could do it either way. Or, I mean, we could just, if you want, a certain number of years, we could.
Is there a policy currently now?
I don't think, that's why I'm asking that question, because I don't think there's a policy right now.
We don't know. So let's look into it, yeah, let's look into it.
Yeah.
Just so it's not 12.
Yeah.
I agree.
Thanks. Any other committees? Next item?
Next item, Board Member and Superintendent Commentary.
Trustee Petlicoff?
I just wanted to take this opportunity to piggyback on trustee McDonald's support of the superintendent at this point in time. He has had six years of highly effective evaluations. We will continue to evaluate him, and that is the time, under the proper organizational meetings, that we would be pursuing those conversations, and not any other time at a public board meeting.
Thank you. Trustee Watts?
Before I forget, I wanted to say before our next meeting, Happy Mother's Day. I believe that's coming up on Sunday. And to all of the teachers out there, and I find it cruel that it's also National Teachers' Week, so that not only are teachers creating projects for themselves, but also Happy Mother's Day, and it's Mental Health May. So I think that it needs to be something that, you know, if I was a legislator, be able to move, but I feel like it's a cruel waste of enjoying their week to make Mother's Day gifts, but that's just, so Happy Mother's Day to all.
And nurses.
And, yes, and nurses.
So.
Was that what you?
That's what I was gonna say.
If I may, just real quick, too.
Yeah.
We've mentioned a couple of times about the awards, the MASB awards that were done. Again, I want to give special kudos to Joanne, she really worked hard on that. Thank you, Joanne, for everything that you did. And as we were leaving, you would not believe the comments that I got. We had the drummers there, we had, you know, student entertainers. I had more people say that, boy, did Dearborn shine. And I even had people say, we need to do it here every year. And I said, I don't know about that, but anyway, so I just wanted to say, you know, thank you to everybody that was involved. You did a really great job, and we were noticed, and everybody had a great time, and it was, it was a good chance for us to, to show what we've got here in Dearborn. So thank you to everybody.
And the highest compliment was paid by Don Wutrowa about Fortson High School. He has been in multiple, multiple buildings across the state, and he has never, ever seen a building as spectacular as Fortson High School. There was a lot of comments made on the tours as well about the preservation of that building and the library. They blew them away.
And I heard many times how great the students did giving the tours.
Yes, they did.
Absolutely. I'm done.
Two quick comments. First, I'll direct Mr. Mustin in. The backdrop looks great.
It looks great.
It's a lot better than the blankness that we had here before. So glad to see that one. I'm gonna be looking at pictures later, trying to see who I know where in time. The other thing I wanted to say is, before this board meets again, the 12th graders are gonna have their last day of school. So to the seniors who will be finishing before we meet again, congratulations. We hope you behave yourselves, and we look forward to seeing you soon at your proms and graduations. Next item?
Next item, request for information and/or future agenda items.
Mine is just, it actually goes into future meeting dates, but I don't want to stop that. We will be having a city relations meeting on June 13th that wasn't included in here.
Time?
4:30, I believe, was the time.
Same location.
At this point in time, I believe so, yes.
Thanks. Trustee Barry?
Yes, Dr. Milak, regarding the busing budget, transportation budget, I know we had a report a few years ago, if we can get that updated, please, to see where we're at. And the other thing is, just to follow up on that report that you gave us, should be easy, just kind of break it down. I just want to see, what would it cost to create one position? We've been talking about the situation, the transportation for many, many years. Maybe the next time we sit down a study session, we can put a goal, something like, maybe we need to move in that direction, two a year, four a year, five a year, creating those full-time positions. I don't want to see like, you know, how many millions and millions of dollars it would cost. How much would it cost for, to create one?
For the, for the transportation?
For the transportation, the full-time position, yes.
Specifically special at, or any position?
Bus driver?
Bus driver.
Bus driver.
Bus driver, yeah. So if it's, if you got a bus driver coming in the morning, bus driver, and he's gonna go home, come back in the afternoon, that kind of discourages from people to apply for the jobs. But if we can create that position where that bus driver's doing something during the day, I'm sure pension kicks in, I'm sure maybe insurance, what is it gonna cost? So I think, I think every, I gotta be careful, I can't say everybody's in agreement, but I heard some support of going in that direction, see how it costs.
We also had talked about it before, I think, with the bus drivers of finding other things during the day when they're.
Yeah, exactly, that's part of it.
And that was just a couple of months ago, I think, so yeah.
And we have had conversations with the union president on that, but we can have some more.
Okay. Trustee Watts?
I think this is probably a list of information, or future, well, private information. I had attended the Autism Alliance, and their guest speaker was this phenomenal young lady called Elizabeth Bonker, and she had created, she's a nonverbal autistic student, college student, who was able to create a form of communication called, her nonprofit's Communication for All, but she uses her iPad or technology within her iPad to communicate back and forth with her, her mom, or anyone who she interacts. And I was just curious as to what sort of, do we have that technology, but what do we use for communication between those students who are nonverbal?
Okay.
We do trust you, Watts, but I'll put it in the report.
All right, thank you.
Anything else from other trustees? Trustee Mosip?
Yeah. A few things. As far as the ESL students in middle schools, what are we doing as far as pushing support in math and science classes, where they're in their mainstream classes? What can we do more to help them? Another thing is, an educator actually reached out to me in our city and brought this issue to my attention about the adult education page being only in English. So for those prospective learners, how will they learn about the program if it's only in English, and they probably only know Arabic or Spanish? So this is more of an ask, if we can have that page specifically, or have a one-pager in both languages, so it can talk more about the program and how they can sign up. I know we've seen flyers before when we sign up folks to, but the pages is not bilingual. And one question, but this might be not for the superintendent, but going back to the attorney's report that was shared now with all of us, why hasn't been shared with the superintendent? I thought that was the case.
No, it was shared.
It was already shared with you?
There was a previous one that was not shared.
I don't have the 2022, but I do have the memo that was a couple pages.
Okay, right. So the one from January was shared with all eight of us?
Okay.
Can I suggest, because that memo happens to mention several other pieces of evidence or paperwork that was prior, when they were not on the board, that they don't have access to? to from other investigations that were done many years ago, that they should also have access to all of that information as well?
Yeah, it's, it's time. We need to.
Motion to extend the meeting 15 minutes.
I'll support.
Motion by Trustee Barry, support by Trustee Mosip. Any discussion before a vote? Roll call, please.
Trustee Barry? Trustee Dambrojo?
Yes.
Trustee McDonald?
Yes.
Trustee Mosip?
Yes.
Trustee Petrikov?
Yes.
Trustee Watts, yes. President Thorpe?
Yes. So work on a history that gives more of the background of what was mentioned in that report, including maybe the one from the fall, and then some of the other ones that were from a couple of years ago.
I just want to say, I always thought about that. There's something that happened a few years ago, and why, you know, why am I here three, four years trying to educate, trying to dance, trying to educate? We should have access. All of the new board members should have access to information. I don't see why not. I don't know if we need to check with legal or not, but I don't see why not.
I don't, yeah, I don't think there's any issue with that.
I just wanted, just one more thing, and I had brought this up earlier in the meeting. The request, and obviously this is for everybody, for board goals, if everybody's open to that. I think that's something that would have value going forward, so that as a board, we can come up with those board goals that we would like to see for the upcoming school year. Not that we have to wait until then, but I think, you know, over the summertime, if we have those goals in mind and stated and written, then we can use the summer to give those goals to Dr. Maliko and the team to see how we would be able to measure that going forward.
How would the trustees feel about working on goals over the course of the summer so that we could have them in place for the next school year?
I would welcome that.
I'd be fine with it. Okay. So something for us to work on, on that?
Just more meetings, that's all.
We'll have to figure out how we're going to do it, if it means another meeting or not. So the two items that I had put down, one was, it was mentioned, PLCs, and maybe the board needs to have a better idea of what the PLC structure is. I know we've had presentations, I feel it's been a couple of years at least.
Yeah, it has.
But even to see if perhaps that can help the board. So I wanted to ask about, we have the Train the Trainers, maybe we can have a Train the Board type of presentation at one of the upcoming board meetings. The other thing I know had, I think it started just recently, but because of COVID, we got away from small group meetings because it was such a difficult thing. Now that we are, are post the pandemic, what I would ask Dr. Maliko is if you could start putting in a couple of days each month where we could sign up if trustees are interested in small group meetings. And I would also ask that, something that we had gotten into before the pandemic, I think, was at those meetings, if you can rotate different members of the cabinet, perhaps with you on some of those ones. So if we've got a particular topic we want to discuss, then we can do that with you in that executive. Thanks. Anything else before we move on? Next item?
Future meeting dates. Monday, May 15, 2023, P12 Board Study Session, 6:00 p.m. at the Administrative Service Center in the Frank Franchi Boardroom. Monday, June 5, 2023, P12 Policy Committee Meeting, 5:00 p.m. at the Administrative Service Center in the Superintendent's Conference Room. Before then, I had mentioned that May 22, we would have a meeting for the Neola policy, 12 to 2:00 p.m., presumably here at the Administrative Service Center. Monday, June 5, 2023, P12 Building and Site Committee Meeting, 6:00 p.m. at the Administrative Service Center in the Superintendent's Conference Room. Monday, June 5, 2023, P12 Board Meeting, 7:00 p.m. at the Administrative Service Center in the Frank Franchi Boardroom. Monday, June 12, 2023, HFC Board of Trustees Policy Committee Meeting, 6:00 p.m. at the Administrative Services and Conference Center in the Cabinet Conference Room. Monday, June 12, 2023, HFC Board of Trustees Meeting, 7:00 p.m. at the Administrative Services and Conference Center in the Rosenau Boardroom. And Monday, June 19, 2023, P12 Board Meeting, 7:00 p.m. at the Administrative Service Center in the Frank Franchi Boardroom.
We are adjourned. Thank.